All right, so at this time, um, so our, our public hearing on the Transportation System Plan was closed on May 17th. Therefore, we will now go into open forum but for any testimony for or against the TSP because the public hearing was closed on the 17th. If there's anyone that has submitted comments or had wished to submit comments this evening, I want to be very clear and let you know that your comments have not if you submitted them after the close of the public hearing. Those comments are not part of the record. They will not be put into the record. Uh, any comments that were emailed after the close of the public hearing, um, likewise, were not put into the record. We will however forward anything received to us by email into the public comments for the master planning that's coming up, right? However, it, I want to just be very crystal clear that, uh, the public comment period was closed on May 17th, so anything after that is not part of that public record, all right? Um, then with that, uh, just a point of order, Peter, do, should we go into open forum and then put any ex-party communication on the record after, or do you want to deal with that now?
No, I think that we should probably go into open forum and then when we actually get to the, um, when we get to the hearing, we can put, um, we can put the ex-party, um, on the record as well as if anyone replied to any of those. And I got a bunch of, I got a bunch of emails for comments.
Okay, so we're going to deal with that because there was a flurry of activities that came in, in the last week, so we're going to address that later on the agenda. But for now, uh, we will go to open forum and at this time, the council will be happy to receive your comments pertaining to items on the agenda with the exception of the public hearings for which testimony, uh, will be received and conducted in the proper form and manner at the time of the hearing, including, uh, questions, suggestions, complaints, and items for the future. So again, we will not be hearing any comments on the TSP tonight in open forum, but anything else pertaining to items on the agenda or, uh, questions, suggestions, complaints, uh, or items for the future, you can come up. Each person's time will be limited to three minutes. Uh, let's go ahead and go to anyone online first. If you have a public comment that is not pertaining to the Transportation System Plan, please go ahead and indicate that you would wish to be heard. You can do so by raising your hand or putting a comment into the comments box or wanting to observe and with-
If I could just interject really quick as a point of order, we actually have two public hearings on, still on the agenda, the conclusion of the Transportation System Plan and the budget hearing.
Oh, I've, I've-
So the testimony regarding budget will actually occur in budget hearing process.
Got it. All right, so, uh, hopefully that clarified for everyone. I, I tend to forget those budgets, uh, those are actually hearings, not just, uh, items. So apologies for, do we have anyone who would like to speak on line?
I would like to speak actually. Um, just on behalf of all the community members, I was the one that raised the concern as to whether or not our conversation about the TSP later on this evening on our agenda is considered a public hearing or whether or not this is what it says on the agenda, which is, um, an ordinance, we're considering an ordinance. So I'm confused, um, on whether this is a public hearing or this is a city council meeting where we're going to be voting on, making a decision on something.
Um, since we have our, uh, our resident, uh, you know, the city attorney is here, I will hand it over to Peter to respond.
So the, um, there are different elements of a public hearing, um, and when the record is opened, that's when you hear from, um, that's when you hear all of the public testimony. And then when the public testimony is closed, you guys can debate the issue and then vote on it that evening, or you can continue it to a date certain. So I wasn't at the last public hearing, but I'm assuming what happened is that you took all the testimony, you closed the record, and now you're taking it up tonight. So, um, to the time, place, demand are certain, which, which means we don't have to continually publicly notice things, um, which, so this isn't unusual. It happens a lot of times, particularly when there's a lot of interest from the community. It can be hard to get through all the public testimony and debates through the various issues as a council. So if you technically are still on a public hearing, but the public participation portion that's closed.
And, and we, and just to, trying to just to let you know, we did that by vote and so that was, right, like we all voted on that, just to be clear. Yeah, okay.
My question, I guess, is that this is technically a city council meeting and according to the open, open forum rules, if it's a city council meeting, the members of the public can talk about anything that's on our agenda, and on our agenda is voting on this ordinance. So I think it's the right of the community-
The way that I've, the way that I've handled that in the past is we, so that we don't want to create a record objection ideally by having someone say that, we want everyone to have the same ability to participate, which is why we publicly notice. And then the, the reason not to accept letters after it isn't that what's a person said doesn't have merit or isn't important, it's that other members of the community might want to participate as well and don't have the same opportunity. So it's just that it's kind of the rules of play, give, provide everyone with, you know, in this case, if we're concerned that people are going to offer public testimony and we don't want to muddy up the record, we could move the old business, um, before the open forum and then in, it, assuming you guys come to, you guys vote and it's done, at that point you could, and then it wouldn't matter whether members of the public opine on that or not, it's just that we want a clean record against this.
Thanks for the question. All right, with, uh, with that, uh, sorry, did that, did that satisfy your question? Did you have anything further or do you want to move on?
So I think what I'm hearing you say is that if we take care of the unfinished business, which is a, then-
So I guess this is old business and that you had it hearing previously.
Okay.
Um, I guess that alternatively, you know, we would ask that people not address this during the public comment this evening, but if they do, then I'm going to handle it the same way that I would handle any other ex-party contact, um, that you as a council are not influenced by what you heard and just move on from there. So as a point of order, I think it's important that we have a motion and second to actually amend the agenda and move item A into old business, because it is old business.
And that, that was-
It says that we won't be accepting, um, it says pertaining to items on the agenda with the exception of public hearings-
Right.
-for which testimony will be received and conducted in the proper form and manner at the time of the hearing.
That's right. So that, on May 17th, then you, you close that record, so that record is closed. There is another public hearing this evening, which is there, your budget hearing, where the record is not closed, you would be taking public comment on that item. So when one is closed and there's no public comment, one, another to open there.
So from my understanding, that the ordinance that we're voting on tonight is a second reading, which will require by statute or law or whatever to do that second reading. So this is going to happen tonight regardless of how we ended, voted on ending the last public hearing. So is this a public hearing for the ordinance or is this a second reading or what is this?
So that's all part of the adoption process. So the way that you can adopt something is if, if it's going to be adopted unanimously and you attach an emergency to it, you would have that that night it would go into effect. That's not something we could recommend with this because there are appeal rights to this. Um, so what I would generally expect to see would be the first reading and then you would come back to the later meeting and do the second reading, which is the five, I mean, and then the, the ordinance goes into effect essentially. So let, let me start off by explaining that it's all under the umbrella of public hearing and in that public hearing, there's a segment for public testimony and that's all on the notice that was sent out. That public testimony period was open, the city council voted to close public testimony. After that, there's no more public testimony, no more modifications to the record other than what the city council has asked for. And so that's still, public hearing is still going technically, but now what we need is we need the council to consider everything that they've been presented and everything that's in the record and then hopefully, uh, have a motion and a second and a deliberation and then a vote on whether to adopt or to remand or modify or approve its conditions or however the council decides. At that point in time, if it's approved, we would have a second reading of the ordinance by short title and that would be the conclusion of the public hearing and then we could move.
I think I got it. Thank you. All right, so, uh, Shawna, are you putting forward any motion to amend the agenda or did that satisfy, um, the concerns that you had this evening?
Uh, yeah, I'm satisfied, I don't need to report a motion, thank you.
Okay, perfect. Anyone else have any discussion or point of clarification with the agenda?
I would just like to ask the council to amend the agenda to add four A under three, make it three A's for old business instead of new business.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I move that we move item four A from new business to under, uh, and three as unfinished
Okay, all does in favor, raise your hand.
That's, uh, I'll tell you right in a minute.
All right, so we have moved item four, I have letters, so-
Four A.
Four A to unfinished business, which is the ordinance 02023-01, an ordinance considering an adoption of the King City Transportation System Plan LU file number 23-01. Uh, so, and you want to do that before open forum?
Well, I think we just still have open forum on anything on the agenda minus the Transportation System Plan or the budget.
Okay. All right, so now we will, at this time, the council will be happy to receive your comments pertaining to items on the agenda with the exception of the public hearings for which testimony will be received and conducted in the proper form and manner at the time of the hearing, including con, uh, questions, suggestions, complaints, and items for the future. Each person's time will be limited to three minutes and we go back to those online and if we, it sounds like we have two comments. Again, uh, please refrain from, uh, adding comments regarding the Transportation System Plan as we just discussed and, uh, each person, uh, Ronnie, who are we calling it first?
Uh, Gary held up his hand first, but he's also here in person.
Okay.
Um, and then I have Viva.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and, uh, we'll have Viva go first. Gary, since you're here in person, it seems most appropriate for you to speak to us in person and we will-
He's going to share something on the screen.
I'm logged on, first to be able to show a couple of, uh, share the screen.
Okay, sure, that, that, we will, we will make that happen. We'll have Viva go first and then we'll, you can, uh-
It looks like a clarification of, if I'm offering comments to provide information to you and not that, that I say, well, that is not to be part of the record for the Transportation System Plan, it gets would be comments of information and help you with your deliberation, would you allow that?
That would be advocacy about the topic of transportation, even if he doesn't wish it to be the record, so.
Right, and, and we will address that in a moment. Let's let Viva make her comment and then we will come back to that, all right? All right, Ms. Viva Gaylor, will you go ahead and put your, uh, name and address on the record and then you have three minutes?
Thank you. Viva Gaylor, I'm with the King City Community Foundation and I'm here to encourage item number three, or I guess it's, would be B now, whatever one it got moved up to, for the council to approve supporting our request for a thousand dollars to have the King City Community Foundation Fourth of July Rock and Walk and Roll Parade. We will be having, uh, the grand marshal, who is a hundred year old, over a hundred year old from the senior village, and I just wanted to reiterate my request. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Gaylor. We hope that you can remain with us until we get to that item on the agenda a little bit later. Again, for the record, uh, I will be recusing myself from, uh, the discussions of this as much as you know. I started the foundation, so, uh, I, uh, uh, will refrain from, uh, any advocacy of all of that in discussion, but I put it there now because, uh, it's there. All right.
I mean, with, with that in mind, while I have not been involved for over four years, I was also part of the, the starting of the foundation, so we should try to make sure that that's on record.
Thank you. All right, now going back, I think, uh, back to, to your comments, right? I'm just saying, in, in the, right, in order for the process to be fair and to have everyone have the same opportunity, right, the public comment period is closed and therefore we, uh, I don't believe can take your comments, even if you don't intend them to be part of the record. I think what I'm hearing from Peter is that, uh, it would still be considered testimony and advocacy and therefore inappropriate at this time because the public comment period for the TSP has been closed.
Correct, clarify that the information I'd like to provide would be, uh, as input on the Kingston Terrace Master Plan, which we'll be covering in a couple of weeks.
And I think we would ask you to hold that and present it as part of the public comment period when it opens for the master planning process and that way it's a cleaner record and you can save it and have further time at that point. But, uh, if, if it pertains to the master plan in Kingston Terrace, then it's more appropriate to have it during that public comment period anyway.
If I could, may I just say that really quick because, uh, the Kingston Terrace Master Plan record is open right now. So you can submit that document to the record, uh, for inclusion on that and present it next week at the public hearing.
All right.
Can, can I ever bring it up so you have that information tonight?
Can't be included as part of the record.
And I, and I will just go back again to the preamble that we, that we have put on here, that we have made it clear, uh, I understand that there, that clarity regarding this particular point might be, there might be some room for, uh, discussion of interpretation, but it does say on the notice that open forum, uh, we will happy to receive comments pertaining to items on the agenda with the exception of public hearings. So with that, we're going to move on. Is there anyone else here in the room that would like to provide public comments other than for the TSP or other public hearings that are coming up?
I have a question.
Okay.
I'm Dave Robinson.
Hi, Dave.
So, uh, I was misunderstood some of the agenda tonight, but the package that was posted a few hours ago had the whole 1,207. Am I correct in assuming that the council will vote tonight to adopt or do something with the TSP, correct?
That is certainly the agenda on, for this evening, correct?
So then is there to assume that each council person has digested? Have you digested? Have you, have everybody not digested that?
So, so while I appreciate where you're coming from, and I also hope that everyone has done the five years' worth of work that has led us to tonight, this is not going to be a dialogue about whether we're prepared or not prepared, and I don't think it's appropriate for you to sit here and ask questions to that nature. Is there something, is, is there something else that you would like to raise during open forum and present in your three minutes?
I will let know by each council president if they are, if they feel they're prepared to vote.
Okay.
The vote is on the record.
I appreciate that, thank you. All right, Ronnie, is there any other comments online? All right, moving on. So at this time, then, we have, uh, no unfinished business.
We did, we moved, we moved-
We have website. I need a new, I'm sorry. Our, now, now we are moving to the ordinance, right, correct? Okay. All right, so on our agenda, as everyone is aware, we are to consider and discuss approving or disapproving ordinance 02, uh, O2, 02, 3-01, an ordinance considering the adoption of the King City Transportation System Plan LU file number 23-01. Uh, the way, uh, that I propose that we do this is we first, if there's any staff questions of mine, if there's any follow-up from, uh, the last one, then, uh, we can ask those. Then we will take a motion, a second, and then have our discussion at that point closer to Robert's rules. So, uh, with that, uh, Mike, do you want to kick us off and then we can open it up for staff questions, uh, at, at next?
Well, I think we left it, uh, the record was closed and all evidentiary information had been presented from our consultants, K S and associates, staff and our staff attorney. Um, but we're happy to answer any questions that you might have, um, raised over the course of the last two to three weeks on course of action or what, uh, been proposed in the Transportation System Plan, facts and figures that were in the original December 2021 Transportation System Plan, those numbers have all gone up. Uh, the street plan that was in that one that you were all familiar with has been modified slightly, uh, to take into consideration the alternative analysis that was conducted as part of the Kingston Terrace Master Plan. And so all those elements have been added and as well as, um, there was a hundred pages worth of comments that were in there as well. And, uh, had a chance to review volume two of the TSP, there's also a pretty significant comment section in there as well. That's all the findings, documents and evidentiary, uh, elements that comprise the Transportation System Plan. The main governing document is volume one, so that's what was amended. Volume two was not amended, that's kind of your research document in the back. So, um, that I'll hand it out to the commission, this is our council's part. This is, this is really your time to, uh, discuss, deliberate and pose any questions that happen.
And I think, I'm sorry, I need to circle back because, uh, I glossed over one issue. So before we get into questions and then, uh, everything else, I, because there's been a flurry of communications that has come in following, uh, the close of the public comment portion, uh, I think it is important that we put on the record any ex-party communications. Okay, so with that, I'm just going to start us off. So, uh, I have been in Washington DC for the last, uh, week, so Mike and I have both been away. I, uh, did not have an opportunity to do a lot of emailing, um, so I received several emails, but since May 17th, the only response that I gave that could be considered, uh, an ex-party communication was to Glenn Fee. Uh, Glenn is the executive director of Tuallaton River Keepers. Glenn sent me an email a couple of days ago, um, pertaining to the paddle of the Tuallaton River event that was on June 6th. He had invited, uh, myself and I believe he invited several other council members. I never saw the invitation for the event itself, um, and, but in his email following up to me regarding the event, he took the opportunity to also discuss, uh, Fisher Road. And when I responded back to him, I let him know that one, uh, I did not attend, he had alluded to that perhaps I hadn't attended the event because I didn't want to come face to face with those who opposed the plan. So I informed him that I did not attend the event because I didn't know about it and also because I was in Washington DC. Uh, I would have gone had I known because I think it sounded like a leathery event. Um, and, uh, and I did not, uh, enter into any discussions about, uh, the TSP or the master plan. Uh, I didn't make any comments to it, I didn't allude to it, I didn't, I didn't do anything. Uh, and then, uh, I did not respond to any other emails, excuse me, that came through about the TSP, uh, or Fisher Road or the master plan that were sent to me after May 17th. So, uh, that is my disclosure. If anyone feels like they had ex-party communication, you, please do put it on the record. Uh, it is important that we have transparency about these things, so, uh, I will leave it up to each of you and then we will go back to our discussion, but, uh, I think we need to handle that since there was some, a flurry, a flurry of communication.
Yeah, I probably got the same email as you did, I didn't, I couldn't make it, I had other obligations, but I have not communicated with him.
Thank you, I've received a bunch of emails, but I didn't respond to any of them.
I understand from you.
And then, Smart, if you have any, uh, email communication that you need to disclose, please go ahead and do so now, take yourself off mute.
Uh, Jimmy, no, I did not have any communication to anyone, thank you.
All right, perfect, thank you, thank you for that. All right, now going back, we'll hand it back to, so, uh, we left off with Mr. Weston saying, uh, kind of recapping and, um, and opening it up for any, uh, questions. I think, Mike, I'll, I'll start off the questions and just, uh, at the last, uh, council meeting, we had a few identified, uh, items that needed to be addressed. Can you just walk us through that and, um, and let us know where the status is of that?
So I think some of the things that we had in question were continuing over 15A, which was one of the, uh, well, uh, on the northern end over 231st Street. Our consultants felt that that was unnecessary because in the code language, it already specified that we need a neighborhood reflector out, a neighborhood route every 600 linear feet. So if that Mollom Park or the property south of Dier Creek were to develop, it would be approximately 600 linear feet from, uh, Vic Bend and therefore not necessary to put a new, uh, illustration on the map on that. Um, if you did look at the TSP that was in the packet, you'll notice that some of the maps were refined and these are the final versions that were released. And so, um, they should have addressed most of the elements. We did put some footnote in, including the 50 foot, being able to fit, uh, the Fishford Road within the 50 foot road, through the, uh, the current existing roadway of River Lane, so that should have been, uh, denoted in there. And, uh, also I want to denote that the southern portion of River Lane going from Montague over to, um, River Lane is actually identified as a local street and not a neighborhood route. So I think those were the, uh, main modifications that the council had identified and called out. I don't remember from my notes, but out of them, there was, um, felt that I was missing on that, um-
See, one of that, that, to me is that Metro wanting some of those revisions, I'm assuming that when, uh, those refined maps happened, the Metro request, um- I'm assuming that when, uh, those refined maps happened, that Metro request, um, is denoted in the, in those maps as well, right?
Yes, those, yeah, that was also removed. Sorry, that was-
All right, I did take a peek, so, I already knew the answer. However, good to get it on the record. Again, I let people know, not all my questions are because I don't know the answer to them, it's because I would like to have things put out into the atmosphere and on the record. So, uh, I'll hand it over to everyone else. Questions of staff, questions of Mike, questions of Peter?
Just to clarify, this is a question, question of the discussion, we're not discussing, we're-
Correct, I know.
The other element was the Fisher Road interchange.
Having to leave.
And so, I asked Kevin to add that into our aspirational project under, um, seven, I think, seven G. Put like a denotion on that. The problem is, is that it's not owned by us, it's actually an ODOT and a Washington County facility, so we would have to get there by, but we are recommending, so we're making a recommendation that they consider two left turn lanes and one right turn lane instead of two right turn lanes.
And to clarify, that's a Fisher and ninety-nine.
That Fisher, I knew.
I think you just said Fisher.
All right, anyone else? Smart, if you have any questions, feel free to take yourself off mute and ask if you have them. I'm not, uh, inferring that any of you should have questions necessarily, it's just, this is the opportunity. If you have, uh, questions before we get, uh, you know, any discussions happen, then this is, uh, a good time to do it. Just make-
No, Jamie, I do not have any questions, thank you.
All right, thanks, Smart. All right, at this time, then, uh, I will call for a motion, and then, uh, a second, and then, we will discuss.
Would you like to make a motion to adopt ordinance, um, two zero two three zero?
Okay, do you have a second? All right, so we will open it up now for discussion. Uh, I just want to, uh, make this comment to, to everyone here, and, uh, especially to Mike and city staff. So, this has been at least five years, uh, so, uh, more than that, I, we have, uh, we have a couple former, uh, council members here in the audience joining us, uh, who started, I, I joined council in seventeen, it was already underway at that point, uh, and so, I just want to acknowledge first, uh, that, uh, an incredible amount of hard work, of stress, um, and of, uh, care and fear and feelings, and, I mean, all of it. I, I, I don't think that, um, we can underestimate the magnitude of, of this project, and I really thank everyone here for the, the part that you played and the hard work, and, um, just the energy and effort, and, you know, I'm incredibly proud of the work that we did. It, uh, it has been a very, very grueling few years. It's been a very difficult few years. I don't want to minimize, uh, any of the residents who, um, right, have very impassioned, uh, feelings about our plans and don't agree with us, uh, or don't agree with the plan by we, I mean, you know, the city's plan. But, um, I really appreciate, uh, the thoughtfulness, uh, everyone has taken. Um, so, I just wanted to put that out there. I, I don't mean to persuade anyone in that sense, but, uh, I think it needs to be acknowledged that this has been an extremely long road, and, um, and I really appreciate everyone's hard work. So, uh, with that, I leave it up to everyone else, uh, and I will hear who wants to get us started.
Um, I'll start. Um, so, I, I echo what Jamie says, I, I recognize and I appreciate how much time and energy has been, you know, put into, I mean, endless hours by the city staff, counselors, present and past consultants. Um, that being said, I, I have to, um, speak from my heart, and, um, on paper, it looks like the alternative that's been presented to us looks like the best alternative. But, my job, our job, I feel, is to listen to the community members, and, you know, in your own words, there were over six hundred letters that are on record against this alternative. So, I feel like there, I have no other choice than to vote no against this alternative, because there's too many community members that are absolutely against it. It's gonna impact, negatively impact so many homeowners. Um, and coming from my real estate background, it makes me think maybe there might be a financial loss to a lot of these homeowners if we vote to approve this alternative. And that, that concerns me. Um, I don't want any, you know, community member to suffer a financial loss based on my decision. So, I, I take my responsibility as a counselor really seriously, and it's, you know, easy for, you know, the staff to go along with the consultant's recommendation, but it doesn't mean that we have to say yes to it. We should vote from our conscience and what we would want if we were in the community member's shoes, because these are our neighbors, you know, and I take what, I take their concerns very seriously, and that's, that's why I ran for this office. I didn't run for it to be, you know, a yes man, I ran for it to listen to the people that are coming and writing letters and speaking up and taking time out of their day, and they really do have valid concerns. I mean, this isn't, they're not just saying, I don't want a freeway in front of my house, I mean, everybody knows it's not gonna be a freeway. But they don't want a thoroughfare in their house, in front of their house, and I get that. Um, so I just want to make sure that my point is clear, that it's okay to say no, you guys. We don't have to say yes, except to us, you know, we have the power. So, that's my perspective.
Thank you.
I mean, I can, I, I agree with that, but, to me, looking, you know, twenty years down the road, if we push the burden of traffic flow onto Beef Bend, it's, you know, it'd probably take five, six light cycles just to get through, even at Roy Rogers or at, um, ninety-nine. I think it's just gonna be piling way too much traffic on it. Is it, do I like it? Not really. But, you know, we had, I think, what, three different engineering and consulting firms look at it, and all three of them come to the same conclusion? So, yeah, I don't, I'm not sure yet, I just, I want to hear, you know, kind of what everyone else thinks, but I just think throwing that burden onto Beef Bend is, it would, I, I think it wouldn't, it wouldn't work. I mean, just looking at, um, uh, like, get, trying to get out of Tigerhead High School, turn left, turn there somewhere, you, you can't, you have to go turn right, go down, turn around, and come back, so, um, I don't, I don't, it's hard to kind of play and look into the future and see, may, maybe not that, it won't happen, maybe not, but I don't know. That's kind of, that's what I'm looking at, so I'm not sure, yeah.
Okay, um, I appreciate your perspective, and I agree with you, I don't think Beef Bend can handle that complexity, but there are, there were other alternatives. There was Alternative Four, which faces a run parallel to Beef Bend, which would alleviate the, that could take over a lot of that traffic. People inevitably are gonna find short paths and get, to get around traffic, right? So, there were other alternatives that would alleviate overloading Beef Bend that didn't make it to the top of the consultant, um, factors, whatever their, the weight, their weighted, um, recommendation. But, it doesn't mean that the alternative they picked is best for our community.
I mean, the-
They selected, they don't live in our community, they don't live on River Lane, they don't live on Fisher Road, they don't, they don't live in King City, which is, you know, K C C A is twenty miles an hour, the road, you know, the rest of King City is twenty-five miles an hour, you know, it's, it's a very quiet community, and these consultants don't live here. So, um, we just have to be super careful in, in making this decision, and we need to base that decision on what we're hearing from our community members. But, yeah, I, I, I appreciate the consultant's opinion, that's their opinion, and they're getting, they're making decisions partly based on what is gonna be financially, um, they're making decisions based on what's gonna be, um, cost the developers the least amount of money, I think, you know, like, and that's not the most important thing in my perspective. So, anyway, to go back to what Mark was saying, yes, I agree, we don't want to overload Beef Bend, but just because we vote, if we vote no on this alternative plan, doesn't mean that we can't revisit Alternative Four, or, you know, one of the other alternatives to alleviate overloading Beef Bend.
I mean, yeah, I guess it's probably a, a question for staff, I mean, can we pick and choose, like, can we, or is it all one trans-T S P, or can we say, like, approve it with, you know, like, no, uh, Fisher extending on the river road?
I mean, you, you have a lot of latitude in, in what you could do. I think that, um, that, you know, that other stakeholders in this have, have aligned on it, and I think that, um, you know, I've, I've been leading this for less than years, but, um, I think that, as you recall, um, but, I, I think that we would, if you're going to go for a different alternative, we would want to put that information out. Uh, one of the points that Metro made was, uh, displacing people in the other alternatives. And so, those people that would be displaced and would lose their homes, I don't know that they participated in this process, but if they thought that that was what was gonna happen, I would expect that they probably would. But, if, if you're going to go with a different alternative than this one- I'm, I'm trying to, yeah, there's, there's over six hundred pages of reasons why not to go with another alternative, and six hundred pages of reasons why to go with this alternative. So, you know, if, uh, you wanna look at the alternative analysis part of, uh, I mean, for the Kingston Terrace Master Plan, you know, S T J conducted, conducted a pretty thorough analysis of the alternative, and this was their preferred alternative, and that's the one that we've been moving forward on, because it's the one that was best suited for what our needs were and what the impact to our community members need.
And I think, I, I'll just time into, is that, um, I, community input is vital, it's important, and I think the fears and the opinions, um, are all valid. I don't think, I don't, I think there's, with a few exceptions of things that, um, you know, I, I've seen written online, which unfortunately, um, have been just very difficult at times. Uh, I think for the most part, ever, the concerns are very, very valid. Where I draw the distinction of this, as a private individual who owns properties that may be impacted by our plans, those owners have every right and should be absolutely advocating for their own personal property. And I don't fault them, I absolutely, if I was a private individual, uh, living in the Rivermeat community, I would probably be doing just everything that they're doing. Our job, though, is, we, we can't plan with contemplation of individual properties and individual ownership of parcels of land, right? We did not set out, um, this process and say, oh, okay, we want to, uh, you know, we don't like Mike Meyer and his family, so we're, we're gonna put a road through theirs, but we do like this place over here, and, and we, we didn't do that, right? We looked at the entire region, uh, and again, I don't mean we, as in the people sitting here, I mean, as a city, uh, my understanding of how they did this, right, was to look at the future growth of the area and superimpose on top of it the planning, right? So, what we have is our own interest as a city versus individual property owner's interest, and those are going to come to a head. And what I think has been very difficult throughout this process is you have, truly, you have the entire spectrum. You have NIMBYism, right? We have seen a lot of that. You have very valid components of people concerned with not just their parcel of land, but also with kind of, uh, the environmental impact, right? And then, you have other people that are just generally concerned overall about traffic and so forth, right? You kind of have the whole spectrum of concern. However, I think we need to be very careful of accepting a private individual's concerns of the impact to their own personal property and not conflate it for support of an alternative or in some other way. I think we need to take it for exactly what it is, right? Which is, we understand that our, our job here is going to impact some private individuals, that is, there's just no way around it, and I am sorry for that, I wish it wouldn't happen, I wish we could do something else that everyone would be on board and everyone would be happy, but it's just not the case. So, the second, for me personally, the second tier down then, I have to look at, is what is going to impact the most people? What is going to benefit the most people in the region of, you know, of King City and the expanded area to the detriment of the least few, right? We, that's the only metric that we can use. And I have said that from the very beginning, right? I have been, if, if they could have held me up by my toes, then they would have to make me give my answer of how I was gonna vote for these last several years. And I have always said that that's the metric. And part of the issue that I have about some of the other alternatives and the, the outpouring of individuals who don't want their personal property impacted, so they want us to do something different, is, right, we know from past that displacing our most marginalized community members has never been a good way to do land use and policy and expanding a city. And our most vulnerable community members live along Beef Bend Road, they live in the Mobile Home Park, they live in areas that it would be very easy to push a road through and move them all, but for what, right? And, and I just categorically reject, uh, displacing our most vulnerable individuals to, to, to have a less impact for a few private residents. And, uh, and I, you know, while I apologize for the impact that my decision is making, I am, I am okay with that decision. So, um, for that, I think when you hire independent consultants that don't have the same pressures as community members who are concerned with their personal property, uh, I think that you get a more fair outcome, and so, uh, you know, so that's my, my two cents. All right? But it is not a time, we are not, we are not going to engage with the public, it is completely inappropriate, please, I, I would like you, I would like you to stay and be part of this as in the audience, but this is not an opportunity to have a dialogue or interject, and if you can't do that, you will be asked to leave. It is improper to, to, uh, to interrupt it. This is our time to have a community, to-
Right, I'm reading.
All right, thank you, have a good night. All right, other conversations and discussions?
Yeah, I would like to just clarify that-
Sure.
I was in no way suggesting that we displace vulnerable populations.
Sure.
Hundred percent not. Um, but I do have a question, and I, and I don't agree with displacing a vulnerable population. But I do have a question, there's, uh, um, going back to our conversation about exploring other alternatives, um, and, and I believe it was Peter that said we would have to, you know, take someone's property, has anybody approached anyone to say, hey, we're looking at these different alternatives? Would you be interested in selling your property if we decided to go with Alternative Four, for example? I mean, nobody's, we're not even at the point to say that we would have to condemn someone's home, when we haven't even asked anyone if they want to sell their home. I'm just not, I'm not sure that that's a, um, a valid argument at this time, saying that we would have to condemn someone's property, when we don't, I don't know, have you asked people if they want to sell their properties, and these other, that it run along with other alternatives, that were alternatives that were considered?
I, I, my recommendation would be if you're going to go with an alternative other than the one that's, that's been identified, um, and you come to a consensus about what you think that, that is, uh, I would think it's the best practice, the city would want to continue this, to notice it, and to provide, probably to reopen your record, so that the people that would be, be negatively, um, impacted would, would have an opportunity. But I, I think what you've seen from a lot of your public advocacy- what you've seen from a lot of your public advocacy is that it's people that are impacted that participate and people that aren't, or everyone's going to be impacted in some manner by any changes that happen to King City. But it's, it's the people that feel they're most impacted that have been most likely to be impacted. So what I referenced earlier, I think, makes sense to read from the, because I want to check in with Roger Alfred of Metro, if you're going to go down that road. Because the, the letter that they sent, that the city's proposals include evidence demonstrating that alternative alignments for the collector, which were duly considered in order to avoid crossing the Eastman at all, could result in the need to demolish multiple duty residents, including multifamily homes and/or homes in a manufactured home park. Metro staff finds that such demolitions would conflict with the purpose of ordinance eighteen dash one four two seven to increase the availability of affordable housing in the area. So given the letter that they submitted, I would, I would want to confer with them. And then I think we want to come back, probably during Notice Agenda Item, and have a conversation related to, if you're going to go down that road, how can we ensure that the public participation? Because there could be, be people that, we want to make sure that they, they could put their evidence on the record that they participated in the process. Because that's, this would be a pretty big event. But that's tough to take into it, if you guys, if the collective of you decide, and, and you are ultimately the people that are responsible for King City's vision and values and how to best carry this forward in the future.
I would just like to jump in first, echo what others have had noted, which is to thank city staff and members of the public, both current city residents and also future city residents within the expansion area for the participation in the process. Because we aren't all going to agree. This, it, it's going to impact every person differently, depending upon where they live, what their, you know, what their. It, it will impact everybody in this room, online, and in the community differently. It will impact me. I live close to Fisher Road as well. But much to what Jamie said, and what I've said from the beginning of this process, as I've met with people and I've taken walks through the, through the areas of the expansion area, my, my take on this, and where my, my vote will end up being always, is with the option that provides the least amount of negative impacts to the existing community while meeting the, the largest share of the need for the growing community. And for me, when looking at all of the alternatives, I, I went into this process first, and I think Mike probably heard me talk about Option Three over and over again, and the northern route of it. And we started going through the different costs and the different ravine crossings that are involved in that as well. And I, I, I do believe that the analysis that was done for the systems plan, I, I think it's, while we, we do not like it, and while we may want to see something different, it makes the most sense. And I, I boil this down to, when I moved into King City, I saw, and I moved into the Edgewater community, I, I take a lot of walks with my dogs, and I'm out in the community all the time, wandering around and just, and just looking at things. Fisher Road, to me, from the moment I moved in seven years ago, looked like an unfinished end to a street. It always did. It is the, the larger road that feeds into that, that neighborhood. It makes the most sense logically. It makes the most sense from a cost perspective, and it makes the most sense from the amount of people that would be impacted, especially people of lower income. And while I have heard all of the comments, and I have read all the comments, I, I, I recognize them, I appreciate them, and I, I understand where they're coming from. Still believe that what we've been presented with as a transportation systems plan represents exactly what I was, what I set out as my commitment to people when I started this job, which was the least amount of impact on the existing community with the, the largest amount of benefit to the community as a whole. And so that's, that's where I will support, and that's, that is my take on it.
Right?
I'll just jump in a little bit on this. So I've been looking at this and worrying about or thinking about this, go back to when I first got on the farming commission in 2016, when we were having, I forget this, chaperones. Charettes, yeah. The charettes with folks talking about the, the content plan, and having people having, looking at the maps and looking at the ideas and the neighborhoods and the movement of folks and the town centers and all the things that we've got going on through all of this. And I think I have to kind of piggyback on what Councilor Paulson is saying, is that what's come down the plan, and this is, this is, this plan covers so much more than just these, these routes that are, that are being proposed. There's so much more in the movement and the involving traffic for, for folks that don't have cars and all of these things. There's just so much more to it. And we really have to look at the, the whole of this, and that we are trying to do something for the city as a whole, not for any particular neighborhood or anyone in particular person. It's what's the best thing for King City. And what I keep coming back to in all the readings and all of this, is that focusing on this route, which to me is really just a side, oh, here, this route does not destroy any homes, affects no people, it uses existing rights of way, it really, in the long run, makes the most sense. And when you look at it, and when you think about the movement of folks in the various neighborhoods, interacting with the river, all of it, it really makes the most sense, and it doesn't destroy anyone's property. To me, that is the biggest thing, in terms of homes. It doesn't destroy any homes. And, and we have to be cognizant of what's good for the whole, and not just any one particular individual or any one particular group. And we have to look at it that way. And for whether, neither one's going to be, agree with our decisions at any point. At any decision we make, there's going to be people that are against it. But we have to look at it that way, and that's what's the most important thing to me. We've put a lot of time into this. We have consultants who have no spin in the game. They're not needing to try and help developers. They're not doing anything except for looking at the facts as they have found them in their explorations of our, of our area. So to me, that's how we have to look at this.
Yeah, I was going to give, Smart, do you have any comments that you want to add to the mix here? And again, you don't have to, I just want to not deprive you of your opportunity since you're on Zoom.
Yes, Jamie and the other councilors, really thank you. Like I've always said, I mean, again, growth is something that we can all not be, kind of be an island to, you know. There's growth going on. When my family and I moved into King City in 2009, I live on Fisher Road, opposite from where we live, there was nothing. It was just kind of empty land. And with time, that got developed, and now we have more people in, living in that area. I mean, Jamie, you live in that area as well. That's where you live. And so growth is something that we cannot kind of stop from happening, you know? Just from the stories I've heard in the past, when Fisher Road, sorry, when, when Edgewater was being built or developed, there was also a protest to what that development would bring to the existing King City then. A lot of crimes, a lot of devaluation of property, and different things that was going on back then. When we tried to work on the 131st, we had a lot of protests about what we were doing on 131st. There was a lot of information out there about what it would do and what it couldn't do, and the fear and everything else. And 131st went into development, and it happened, and none of those things are kind of happened the way that everyone was kind of being fearful as to what it will be or what it will lead, lead to. So we're faced again today with this development that we're all looking at. And again, longevity with all the technology that we have today, development in, in medicine, in the field of medicine and everything else that we have, the population is growing. And unlike in the past, when, when I was kind of always going back to when the city was 55 and older, and how many people were here in the city then, but look what we turn out to be today, right? And we, we value our elders, we value our, 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 yeah, our seniors, we value our retirees, they're inspiration to us, and we love seeing them around. And so they have been here, and as other people, other developing or growth continues to happen, we need to plan for that. And that's what we're doing right now. If we don't plan, we'll just be caught off guard. And when someone is caught off guard and not being prepared, you're rushing to making decisions, and then you incur more, more, more issues. You incur more costs, you incur more, different things that kind of creates majority of maybe issues that a neighbor, a neighborhood that's kind of coexisting and having everything going, you know, having camps and everyone trying to make sure that they have their say, or they, they want to make sure that what they have is listened to. And that's what we are doing. We've been opening this to everyone to listen to what the population is saying, to the residents. And we've even had, I mean, in the, in the, in the whole mix of everything, we've had these discussions go out to the neighboring communities, and we've been hearing, I've heard people in, friends of mine in Beaverton or Tiger, or share with, they keep asking me about, oh, what's going on in King City? So you can see how much and how far this discussion, this topic has gone, you know. And for us, as the city council, it falls on our shoulders to make the right decision. It falls on us to discuss and to make sure we listen to everyone, we listen to what our experts are saying, and we listen to what our residents are saying. And we've not turned anyone, anyone away. I mean, we've been turning everything over to the group that is handling all of this. And again, we've exhausted and made sure that we listen to everyone and kind of try to apply what the suggestions and what the comments are, and see how it plays into what else is on the table. So it's not a rushed job. Like Jamie said, it's been going on. I've been on the council since 2015. You know, this has been going on, and it's not like a rush team that will say, we'll get it done in the next year, we're just going to get the shovel in and start working. No, it's still work in progress, and we're giving everyone the opportunity to be able to participate and see what it is that they would like to have us listening and do. So again, a lot of work, a lot of hard work by everyone, I mean, on both sides, both those against and those for, I mean, it's a lot of work. It's exhausting, you know? And it can be chaotic at some point when, I mean, we want to be as professional as, as respectful as we want to be, but again, when you're truly emotional and everything into it, it goes in directions that you can't have the control over. So we just ask for everyone's patience, we just ask for everyone's, just give us the time, give us, give us your, your patience that we can work this together. At the end of the day, when we make the decision and move forward, it's something that we all come to agree to. A lot of discussions have been going on, again, like everyone has said on the, on the, on the council tonight. So people need to understand that we're not just jumping to conclusion, we're just making sure we turn all the stones, dot all the i's and cross all the t's, and everything that we have to do just to make sure that at the end of the day, everyone is heard. So thank you, and I really appreciate the opportunity.
Thanks, Mark. It sounded like it was on. Now it's off. There you go. Let's try.
Is it working?
Tap it?
Hello?
Well, I think maybe here, everyone else.
All right, just keep closing.
So, I have a lot to say. Let's keep what we're saying. Um, one of the things that's been resonating in my head for however long it's been since, since someone stood here and said it to us, and you may all remember, I don't remember what line, I can see her face, was be brave. And that statement was repeated to us multiple times. That's kind of been in the back of my head for a lot of reasons. I don't think it's the reason that she said it. I don't think that's the reason. But I do want to acknowledge that it does take bravery to engage in public discourse. It does take bravery to dissent, no matter what that looks like, or, or who you're dissenting against. And I couldn't figure out why I was feeling nervous about today. And then I realized that I was worried about, you know, safety. I was worried about behaviors that we'd seen in the past. And then I reminded myself to be brave. And here we are. I think that this process, like, from today forward, I guess I should say, is necessary in order to ensure the healthy growth of King City. So while I appreciate everything and everyone who has contributed to this discourse, I do see a future where we have no transportation, transportation system plan and no master plan. And I do see no King City in that future, or a jumbled mess. I do see a future where we have a good transportation plan and master plan in place in order to grow in a healthy, measured, but most importantly, controlled way. And this is our opportunity to control the growth of the city and direct the growth of the city. I also wanted to mention, on behalf of all of us, I think, that the evidence that we care is not in whether or not we agree. Each and every one of us cares about the residents of King City, the future residents of King City. That doesn't mean we have to agree. We do not have to agree with each other. We do not have to agree with, you know, our neighbors. And I've been taking possibly just a little bit of a different viewpoint. Some of you have mentioned some of this. But I am basing my decision definitely on, in support of the hundreds and thousands of voices we did not hear. And I am basing my decision in support of the future of King City, and the fact that I would like to see a controlled, healthy growth, where we have resources and opportunities to protect environmental resources and to grow in a healthy way. And I feel like we're all brave. I feel like any people who have presented their thoughts and feelings to us regarding growth have also been brave in doing so and engaging in public discourse. I, with that, would respectfully vote on the motion I have.
Thank you for everyone's comments. With that, the motion has, on the floor, is to adopt the ordinance. Mike, can you read it? My computer went down. Can, will you just?
Motion was to adopt ordinance, twenty-three oh one ordinance, considering the adoption of the King City transportation system, and I just filed number twenty-three oh one.
It has been seconded, so now all those in favor, please raise your hand.
There should be a voice.
All right, or, oh, yeah, it should be a roll call. You're right, Lori, thank you. Yep, roll call.
Do roll call vote here. Commissioner Petrie, or, sorry, Councilor Petrie. Councilor Manoa.
Yes.
Councilor Paulson.
Yes.
Councilor Moore.
Yes.
Councilor Thompson. Councilor Ocholey.
Yes.
Mayor Thunder.
Yes.
Attorney Carrie, fix the one.
Right. Uh, with that, I want to just uh again reiterate kind of what uh Kate said and also what what Shauna said, that uh I really appreciate everyone uh, you know, voting from your heart and uh this has been a long road and I appreciate everyone's uh hard work.
There's only seven camps. You need uh as a point of order, we need to conduct a second reading of the ordinance by court alone.
Okay. Uh, Mike, will you do our second reading for us, please?
This is the second reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash zero one, ordinance twenty-three dash zero one, an ordinance considering the adoption of the King City Transportation System Plan, land use file number twenty-three zero one.
Thank you. All right, now with that, uh, we are now going to move on to new business. And our first new business is going to be the budget adoption hearing. We are to discuss and approve or disprove the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget, and Mike Weston will present.
The council is already aware of most of the budget items and where we sit. We are uh bringing on some additional staff and trying to acquire some additional police vehicles. So in that, we are dipping into our reserves a little bit, I think there's about a reduction in our reserve of uh sixty thousand dollars over the course of the next fiscal year. Those numbers can be seen within the uh second page here when we go into uh, hold on. Third page, sorry. Uh, we're at third page, line twenty-two, the total requirement is not allotted. Uh, last year, we had uh one point eight nine million outside of reserve, and we're estimating that this year we'll have one point eight one six. So that's a reduction of about sixty, seventy thousand dollars on that budget item. Uh, that will help us pay for the additional planning staff members that will need to uh bring on board and bring up to speed in order to handle um new planning uh permits and land use applications that we're anticipating coming in by the end of the year. That's the big ones, and then the other one is the uh police vehicles and the track down at the uh King City Park is also included, taken in part out of ARPA unless we can get legislative dollars to offset some of that. The cost did come in higher than we had initially planned, I think the initial cost. The track were about sixty thousand and they're coming in closer to a hundred and twenty thousand or a hundred and thirty thousand. So um, of course, we haven't finalized the bid yet, but the bid docs are being put together and going out. So uh, we should be able to turn on that pretty quick if the state legislature comes through, and and if they don't, we can use our ARPA dollars, I think, to. Were there any questions that the council or councils had on the budget that do we all were pretty familiar with it already?
Just a comment, I'm glad that we're putting that track in because I was walking last week and I fell walking my dog. My my loser heels now.
I understand we had a fall out here uh while we were in D T as well. I'm not sure exactly what had occurred, but uh someone uh walking along the street or somewhere had uh taken a fall and had to go to the emergency room, and we were in Washington. I don't know all the specifics related to that, but uh it did sound pretty good. I I hope that they're doing well.
Yeah. Other comments or questions?
Do we need to open up a public hearing on the budget or?
We need to open it on the budget. Um, I think what the mayor could do is open it up for public testimony and uh states and nays uh in hearing pros and cons, close the public hearing at that point in time, and then we could uh render a decision on the ordinances that we have here, which are, I think they're actually resolutions.
Yeah, these are the resolutions.
Yeah, resolution twenty-three dash zero seven, which is the form that gets it gets adopted and sent in, and then there should be a healthy form fifty, and resolution twenty-three oh eight, which is the city services. Uh, the city services generally are police, administration, uh other courts. And it's. And we have to adopt our uh tax rate, this one fifty-two point six one, or sorry, one point five two six one, along with the uh police tax rate, which is point zero six three, and that's all in resolution point three oh seven. Then, and twenty-three oh eight is to receive uh select to receive state. Yeah.
Is there a change in that tax rate or is that the same?
Tax rate, yeah. So we would have to, there's no way that we can change our permanent tax rate currently under the current tax structure. Um, we can go out for lettuces, we can ask for lettuces, and the city council can adopt fees via resolution. And we've talked about fees and the application of fees a couple of times previously, and we're still considering how we administer those and trying to uh work out the details with our service providers who we have franchise agreements with. And those are going to be uh Portland General Electric, Tiger Water, King Lord Services, or Northwest Natural would be another one, Comcast Cable. Um, we can assess fees for each of those services um and apply them to certain uses like parks erect, like stormwater, uh like vehicular uh tax for roads and things of that nature. And so one of the things that we've been trying to do is the gap tax, because that would basically not tax King City residents, but tax uh people transiting north and south on ninety-nine W, and we would get a larger tax base uh that's not directly impacting King City residents. Unfortunately, our two attempts to get that measure to pass have failed, and so that leaves us with fees. So we, oh, and the last fee that we would have an option to is the vehicle registration fee, uh, which we could go uh through resolution to the apartment and motor vehicle. The other, the the other, a all taxes are controversial, so I think that's it, but of the controversial transient logging tax increase, that's controversial as well because those are born normally by out of area visitors, um, though I'm sure that they're King City residents, family members, would be paying part of that. Uh, the one caveat with that is that um thirty percent can be used for general funds, um, but seventy percent of those increases have to be um to promote tourism. So active re- uh, active outdoor recreation is is, that is one way of it. And we do have some of that already, but we do get the transient tax off of the uh best what's coming in, it's not much, but it's um, it's a consider as we go and things get tighter or nasty grow.
At this time. Mike, do you want to come on? Somebody needs to monitor our Zoom.
Did we officially open up?
I'm going to, but in order to officially open it since, um, so at this time, uh, we will open up a public hearing regarding uh the resolution twenty-twenty-three dash seven, adopting the budget, and resolution twenty-twenty-three dash eight, declaring the city election to receive state revenues. Um, and at this time, we will take public testimony for, against, and neutral. If you wish to speak uh at this time in the public hearings, please indicate online uh by raising your hand or putting in the chat function so that Mr. Weston can see. Uh, after uh public testimony, if any is given online, uh, then we have one comment here in the room, we will take that. So we'll give it another uh twenty seconds, please, if you wish to be heard. All right, hearing none, we'll have a public hearing testimony in the council chamber.
I have a neutral comment that our King City rock walk and roll parade is we do promote tourism there because we do post it on a lot of those boards around. So that is an event that we are participating in. And I have a question on the budget, did you update the total diversity?
Um.
It just looks like things.
You just talked about that.
We talked about that at the meeting.
Yeah, we talked about that last meeting. Thank you for your comments, Viva Gaylor. Just put it in the record for you.
I did that earlier in the chat.
Yeah, she did, you mean in two thousand twenty-one, twenty-three?
Yeah, that twelve is a little high.
For this coming year, twelve is correct, that's what we have on staff. Uh, for last year.
No, it's not on staff, Mike, the two oh eight oh hours divided by the total amount of pay, so if they weren't on staff from the first of January on, that wouldn't count.
Right, and that's what she needs to correct. So this is gonna be line, uh, right now, we do have, uh, we should have, we're planning for twelve full F P E.
That's the goal.
That is the goal. Um, to actually.
What, did you go online?
It uh, it's gonna be page two, and we should be planning for thirteen F P E. That needs to be modified.
Supposed to be twelve?
No, because we're planning for a planner to join it. Now give us thirteen.
Oh, so half a year is twelve point five.
Right, because we, yeah, we talked about.
Yeah.
It isn't headcount.
I know, it's not headcount, right. But we will have uh six officers and seven administrative people.
Well.
But, yeah, um.
But we might be able to hire them as soon as prior August. It's not quite thirteen, so I guess technically it's still okay.
Twelve point seven five.
It's not quite a uh entire F P E because they won't be on for the whole year. So I mean, we can leave it at this. Not really going to change any of the numbers that we have um equated here. Or we could, the thing that is irritating, I think, to me was looking back at twenty-twenty to twenty-one and then twenty-one to twenty-two, where it says we had thirteen and there's no way we had thirteen F P E. At most, we probably had ten, and so um that's a misnumber, that's how many people we had throughout, that's a headcount, that's the people that we had throughout the entire year, not an F P E. So those should be probably more like ten, and then now we're at uh twelve to thirteen for this next year.
So it seems like then we might want to go back on this and table it for next, next month, because we're, or can we approve what that and that?
With the modification, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so I would say, you know, twenty-twenty needs to be changed to the proper number. I believe it was, uh, this was before we had Diana, so it should have only been ten. Uh, twenty-one, twenty-two, can be hired Diana, so that was going to be uh eleven. Last year, we were at eleven. I'm sure it should have been.
So and I.
Our officers.
So I'm a, I'm.
That has to be in there.
Yeah.
But that's how the number is used truly to count, I mean, it has a need.
Right.
Now, Ms. V- Ms. Gaylor, um, we appreciate your service to the city of King City as a plan, as a budget committee member and your wealth of knowledge. I got into a little squall, and I'm not gonna call it a squall, but uh I rejected comments from uh the gallery earlier in the process, and it would only be fair that I do the same reminder to you, as much as I love you, uh, and so everyone knows for transparency's sake, Viva and I have a long history of friendship, so I know Viva well. However, we are um going to not uh go into uh discussion because that would be unfair to those that I um didn't allow earlier in the evening. So with that, Mike, what I can say is I am personally a little confused, um, since we have a open uh hearing as well, are we able to keep the, are we able to make a recommendation with the changes but keep our public hearing open for comments? Because we have just made a lot of changes that I think is only fair that people have an opportunity to become apprised of and then put comments on the record if they so wish. I, are we able to keep the public comment period open, make the recommendation, but make a final decision at the next?
We can't do that because the final decision would be made.
So.
I don't think we made a lot of changes at all. It's just historical accuracy that needs to be recorded for twenty-twenty-one, twenty...
We're just, we're correcting history.
So will you, will, can someone, once we have all the figures clarified, can you read into for us, specifically what line item needs to change so that we are all on the same page and it's clear on the record?
Well, and I don't know that you know what line item needs to change right now. I think that we just need it to be calc- recalculated and make, could make sure it's correct, because some of this could be correct given total hours worked.
Yeah, overtime.
Want to make sure it's accurate.
Okay, so that, so.
You can check with the auditor. Yeah, given that, given that overtime, even if you only have ten people and there are positions who are parked here or not.
Right.
Or unfilled, the number can still be right, but it's just verifying, I mean, you can, you can pass this with the instruction that might verify the data, the it's historical data.
Okay, all right, that that I, that makes more sense, I I appreciate that.
To be clear for anyone listening, this doesn't change the budget.
Right.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right.
Okay, I, it's just, uh.
Yep.
Wonderful. All right, well, then with that, I withdraw my concern. With that, thank you. All right, so is there anyone else uh online who would like to make a public comment during this open hearing on resolution twenty-twenty-three dash seven and twenty-twenty-three dash eight? Otherwise, we will close the public hearing. Hearing none, then the public hearing, the comment period of the public hearing is now closed at seven thirty-two P M on June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three, and with that, I will entertain a motion.
Move that we adopt uh the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget, have you got that historical data is reviewed the auditor?
Resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry, resolution number, thank you, resolution number twenty-two.
Thank you. Resolution number twenty, twenty-three dash zero eight.
And oh seven.
And oh seven.
A second.
All right. Mike, you wanna do a roll call?
Counsel Peter.
Yes.
Counsel Minella.
Yes.
Counsel Paulson.
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Johnson. Mayor Hunter.
Yes.
I need to get.
Smart has his hand raised.
Martin has his hand raised, we can see it. Thanks, Martin. We appreciate you. All right, moving on to the King City Community Foundation's request for uh sponsorship of the Fourth of July Parade and Festival. If uh Ms. Gaylor can join us from either there, uh, and again, I will uh recuse myself from any vote on this um item, and uh.
And for, for clarity on that, I, I would like to ask Peter and Mike as well if it is appropriate for me, as somebody who was involved with that board over four years ago, be able to note on this, or if I dispute advice.
Your status is a, your past status related to um service on internal organizations does act on.
Okay.
I mean, if, if you, if you don't feel it would be appropriate to participate, you can, you can always recuse yourself, whether you have a conflict or not.
Okay. I mean, I, I don't have any involvement, so it doesn't seem like I.
I personally don't think that it's an issue. I just think for myself it is, so, uh, with that.
So, all right. I'm not sure if we need to have further discussion, or if we should just go ahead and vote to approve. But does anyone have any questions or expressions?
I guess the only question I have is what was given, was it saying about last year?
I, I think we had five hundred last year.
Oh, was it? Okay.
Um, because we had five hundred donated from Columbia Bank before they went out, the year that we didn't do anything. So that's what kind of kept us going through the pandemic when we weren't, weren't um doing any kind of hydrants.
Okay.
And we also expanded to have two thousand houses, so that it's very popular with kids.
Yeah, no, it's a great community event, but, yeah.
And as I said, five hundred, two hundred.
So Viva, that was my question too, is, is that the, the jump, the jump from five hundred to a thousand seemed like a lot, but you, what you're explaining is that in the past, you have had funds coming in from another source that you no longer have. And so this would really be equivalent to what you normally have as a, as a fund?
A bit.
A little bit less. Okay, so we're, we're just filling in the, the spaces, filling in the blanks that are now present, right?
But we can build to have a better one next year and get more community volunteerism and have us work together and and I, we had done a business roundtable too, at the King City Community Foundation. And part of that was to support the gas tax, to just kind of get the feel. And then it was uh things that died out, but we did get that contact. So we kind of operated that way with, with King City Community Foundation to help facilitate um some of those dialogues and, and have sense of community and get the both communities working together early on. It was to have uh both. And this year, we have succeeded in joining the King City Community Association's fire pressure parade with our parade. And we've tried for a few years, and we succeeded this year, so we are making progress. We're.
Make a motion then? Go over your motion. Um, I motion to approve the request for one thousand dollars to the King City Community Foundation to support their annual Fourth of July Walk and Roll Parade and Festival. I'll say it.
Do a roll call, Mike. Yes.
Counsel Minella.
Yes.
Paulson.
Yes.
Counsel Moore.
Yes.
Paulson.
Yes.
I'll go to Counsel Ocholey online.
Yes.
Mayor Hunter.
Abstain.
She's abstained.
Abstain, but we all know I wholeheartedly support the foundation.
The motion passed at eight zero.
I just want to say thank you to Viva for all that you do.
And it was Viva's birthday, and we had a planning, a Fourth of July, we meet every Sunday to do it. And uh, I'm just gonna put it out there in the record that Viva let the entire meeting go by and didn't remind me that it was her birthday, and I forgot. So here is my public apology to Ms. Viva Gaylor for forgetting her birthday after all these years, so. Happy birthday, Viva. All right, wonderful. Um, yeah, a little, let's take a little break. We're gonna come back in, uh, let's do five minutes and we'll come back, all right?
Counsel Paulson, do you wanna talk about um how this works for us?
On line, um, we took a quick, quick bio break, as they say. Uh, and um, we have one item on agenda. It has been suggested that perhaps we um, we postpone or uh move the council reports to the next agenda. Uh, next time, it's been a bit of an emotional evening and um, and a few uh members need to uh get uh home. So, uh, for that, do I hear, do we have a motion?
I'd like to make, oh, I'd like to make a mo- motion to postpone um councilor and manager report to the next meeting, um, acknowledging that we do still have one more agenda.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those uh in favor, raise your hand. I don't think we need a roll call for this one, do you? All right, all right. All right, thanks, Martin. It's a resounding, yes? So, all right, we will deal with the last issue on the agenda tonight, which is the community block grant uh urban requalification process. Uh, while we were on break, we did not deliberate or have discussions about it, but it was, uh, I think a few people were um, shared some confusion over uh what exactly or why we have to do this. So, uh, Mike is gonna take us away with just a reminder that this is a renewal. Mike is gonna take us away and let us know that this is a renewal, I think.
Yeah, so the discussion that we had on the break was how this applies to this. There was different ways of reading the letter, and, you know, I was initially kind of confused. I was hoping I could uh, uh, ask Commissioner, or Counsel Paulson to, to chime in and uh give me his, his advice on this as well, because to me, when I first read it, it sounded like we had to opt out of funding opportunities if we were a partner of this. But as Counsel Peters pointed out, and Counsel Paulson, we believe that that state funding versus county funding. So by opting into the county community development block grant, we opt out of the state community.
So my understanding might be a little different, but I, I don't necessarily believe it's that. I think it is more uh along the lines of the HUD money is distributed to counties to distribute within. There are two cities within our CBDG kind of group of uh Beaverton and Hillsborough that do not have voting rights within the Washington County CBDG Pol- Policy Advisory Board. And that is because they have their own community, community development block grant programs that are separate from that. We could opt to do that as well, but actually, I don't believe we can because of our size. Uh, like Tiger is able to do that, but they opt into the county program rather than being their own separate program. So that's I, what I believe it to be. And, yes, this is a renewal of a program that we continue to participate in and have participated in and have received funds from uh for improvement projects in the past.
So the way that I read the letter was, it was more about transi- letting us know that there's an automatic renewal, and that should we not want to do that, we do have an option to opt out. Uh, and uh, but uh, for me personally, having uh previously been uh the CBD, C, B, B, G, uh, CDBG, oh geez, uh, representative, um, the, it's a phenomenal program. It's dear to my heart, I think it's dear to all our hearts. We've seen some phenomenal um, uh, grants that came out of that. Um, and uh, I personally think that we uh do everything we can to continue to support uh those efforts, so. Anyone have any questions or?
It does say that we're, if we continue to protect, which is what we've been doing, we are ineligible to apply for grants under the state CBD program while we're apart.
That would be because we would be doing it by ourselves, which is one of the.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we would be doing it as a city rather than as part of a consortium in the county.
Right.
We like what's been, what we've done, and we should.
Well, and we don't have a staff to be able to actually uh handle
Right.
the processing of requests for grants and for administration of it.
Yep.
Hence why it doesn't make any sense for us to do.
Right.
I'd like to make a motion to do this agreement. And use the three years, is it a three-year deal, as it says that? Yes, intergovernmental cooperation agreement with Washington County to continue our partnership in the community development block grant program.
Okay. Motion, a second, Mike, you wanna do roll call on this one? It says, your city's authorization must be documented in one of three ways, agenda in minute order, resolution in order, copy of the completed minutes showing the motion and approval. So one of three.
Motion and approval.
We have a motion, approval, yes.
To uh continue membership with the Washington County CBD community development block grant program. Uh, I have Counsel Moore moved and Counsel Paulson seconded, uh, Counsel Peters.
Yes.
Counsel Minella.
Yes.
Counsel Paulson.
Yes.
Counsel Moore.
Yes.
Counsel Paulson.
Yes.
Counsel Ocholey.
Yes.
And Mayor Hunter.
Yes.
Annamit. Question passed.
All right.
Make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All right, all those in favor, raise your hand.
All right.
All right, we are adjourned. I thank you all for your hard work.